In front of the podium and the microphone is got me.
Yep.
Okay, when Bearbell talks, I may not be able to see her talk, but Zoom is going to broadcast her as the speaker out to the world. But I may not be able to see her here in this part right here.
Okay, alright.
It is doing exactly what it's supposed to do. It's just that the people standing in the county boardroom speaking or the people sitting here may not be able to see the other speakers. I'm not sure that's going to be able to be fixed simply because the owl is focusing on the people in here speaking and Zoom is doing everything it should do.
Okay.
Jana, one question I have because I've seen how it works in the county boardroom before and it seemed to switch. If the computer that's in the county boardroom, just check if there any chance a PIN was set to that it would stay on the county boardroom only? That would be set on each individual computer, not in our Zoom account.
I don't think it's pinned, but I'll definitely.
Let me ask Bearbell. Hey, Bearbell.
Yeah?
Can you tell me what you see of me? Do you see Marie standing next to me in my full face?
Yeah, I see both of you very well displayed.
She sees both of us. Okay, we're just checking because Marie says they couldn't see me. She couldn't see me in the boardroom, but wanting to make sure the Zoom world could see me. Okay.
Yeah, Michelle, a slight, a little improvement would be if you move a little bit to your right, about six, seven inches.
This way?
No, to your right. Yes, this way. Because the window has like a really bad glare on the bottom.
I can't do much better. So the blinds are drawn.
This is already much better.
Okay.
Yeah.
Christian, I can see you now. I think we muted the owl in there, so I don't think we can hear you.
Yeah, we can't hear them. It's muted in there, which is what you want.
Yes.
Okay. Hey, Bearbell, if you want to start watching the chat just while we're kind of working through this, just to make sure.
I am. Sounds good. And just one thing, I see we may want to rename you and all the boardrooms. Everybody is Michelle Sodowskis right now.
Okay, I'm gonna go in and someone's gonna have to rename me in the boardroom. Maybe we just say boardroom.
Yeah, boardroom and committee room, something like that.
I haven't pinned anything.
Okay.
Alright.
Your information is left talking in the county boardroom. It's not given to anything, so that is not set.
We just, yeah, we just, with some, does someone know how to rename that view?
Who's? Whose view are we renaming?
Just, I want to name it to the county boardroom. I can't do it from here.
You want me to do that?
What issue?
The view where I'm standing has got Michelle's name on it. So we want to rename that to county boardroom.
Oh, I don't know.
I can come, I'll come do it. It's okay. Bearbell, you want to cover just for a few minutes, please?
Yeah, I'm covering.
Thank you.
I can.
How many people are you expecting to be?
What's the next model?
Yeah. But we don't know. We asked for your permission. Somebody said they couldn't get in and we had enough for us.
Okay, so where is?
You can use your mouse too.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to find where is my?
Down at the bottom, it will be the participants. Click on participants. Yep.
No.
Actually, yeah, there. Okay, now up at the top.
Host.
Are there two hosts?
Yeah. Rename.
County boardroom. Okay. Just tell me if, just tell me if this is county boardroom underneath me.
Hey, Bearbell.
Yes?
Does it say county boardroom under us then, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then?
Nobody's going to be speaking in committee room.
No, but at least it says. Okay. And then committee room too. Okay, I think we're good.
You just started with the recording. Is it?
Just a bit ago.
Yep, and I just want to get out of this, I hope.
No, not that.
Which one?
It looks like on the little arrow above the first person.
This here?
Yep. And then you close that.
I knew that big X was dangerous. Alright.
Now, are people coming in muted?
They seem to be.
Well.
They have been, Jana, so far.
I want, yeah, I wanted to have some kind of slip up there to say if they could testify what we're doing.
Yeah, I know.
Alright, so you got this covered. I'll be in my room if you need me. You can also text me.
The owl is picking up you.
You can also text me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, let's see. I'm gonna be stepping away for just a second.
Okay, Jana.
Thanks. I'll be back in just a bit.
And I see the host. That must, excuse me, that must be you that you unmuted me or you muted me and that's fine. But anytime the person like me can unmute me too. You know what I mean?
I missed that I was not in the room.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I said, people are coming in muted, but I can unmute myself at any time and so can anybody else.
But we are going to announce that if they are not speaking, please do not unmute your microphone.
Correct, yes. Okay, very good.
Control. That is as good as we can do.
Right.
But I would imagine those that are coming in, we automatically mute them when they come in.
Yes.
I know some people are going to say, can you hear me or am I on? Or, and hopefully Bob will take control of that situation.
Okay.
Yeah, also, Michelle and I, we, I have the power to mute you or anybody else. And I'm also a host. And that means if somebody, you know, whatever, forgets to mute themselves and then the dog starts barking, that we are able to interact right away.
Correct.
Bearbell, we'll, we'll count on you to do that and take some control over that too.
Right. My only point was anybody can unmute themselves and you can keep muting them, but that's fine, you know? That'll work.
Like I said, we can only do the best we can do, so.
Yes, absolutely.
No, I'm, again, I'm gonna be away for just a bit.
Hey, Bearbell.
Yes?
I'm gonna put a text out to everyone here. I'm gonna send them to me for right now. And then we'll just kind of take it from there, so.
Sounds good. How many people do we have registered at this point?
To testify?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. Jana dropped those things off for me here.
I see.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15.
Okay.
And depending on what she brings in at the front desk and what we bring in here.
Michelle, over to the side a little bit?
Yeah.
And I think that's good to be announced. Okay. I will tell people.
Michelle?
Yep.
I think it would be helpful if you may clarify to Land and Water, Michelle, because your name doesn't show other way in the gallery view. And then they might not know where to send to.
It doesn't, okay, I see what you mean.
We started at lunch, we got a little before, and then we're out with them by the hearing and then at least 25 minutes plus the 10 minutes that Ryan Peters gives for the actual press release petition. So that's 55 years. It's almost an hour of testimony. And the people who are coming in and probably chat for a whole hour now, they can register to be testified. So there could be another hour, another 15 people.
So you could be here till 3:00.
And what I might do, Bearbell, too, is just request, I put it up here for, obviously in the chat box, but we could request people to chat with us too if they are wanting to testify.
But if you want my direct cell?
To chat with us?
Yes, I might make an announcement here too, just to make sure. We don't have a lot of people in right now, but I want to make sure that they're knowing to connect with us via chat.
Yeah, okay.
Michelle?
Yes?
Um, I, she offered to put a sign on that computer in there, but sometimes that invites people to do something. So I will tell people that I am putting in that committee room too, to please attach that equipment because it could take down the whole system.
Okay.
And I'm going to, just want to get my counter and my, I have times for when people are coming in. Do I need to record the time still?
I would, because they're gonna, it'll be making a difference between what I'm taking and by chance what Bearbell's taking. So yeah, just, if you could put them up on the right corner, just nice and big.
Okay, we'll do.
I mean, obviously, I've got the order that you have here and everything will go behind there, but at least we can put them in order from there.
Okay, that sounds good. And then I'm going to be sitting up front, so it's almost quarter after. People could start at any time.
Okay, I've got my phone. I'll text you if I need you.
Okay.
100.
You did not, did you?
No.
I might have 100. No, I don't really have 100.
I have, I have five sheets, so 10.
Okay.
And if needed, I should be able to print more fairly quickly. Well, it's really good to see that the IDT department is present and ready to help.
Yeah, that worked out nice. I mean, we thought we'd be okay, but, I mean, we did run into that issue. And I think what happened was is because they changed the audio on how it runs through the boardroom. So the owl gets a little confused. And so what it was doing, it wasn't, it was just holding, everybody could just see one view and it was like the view of committee room. We got it figured out, but it, and I haven't been here since they did that sound change.
I see. So it just happened recently.
Right there. Would you like to register to testify?
Sure.
Me? My name is?
Michael.
And last name?
L, T, A, V, D, E, R, S, N, I, B, C, O.
I went to school in Chicago. How your address, Mike?
30, 87, South, Red Bull Road.
In what's a tiny paper position? In paper room, not position of, or any information.
Hey, Bearbell.
Yes?
Bob Mott said when he clicks, it says meeting is locked by host. Does that even sound familiar to you?
No, I couldn't.
Did you just click on the link when you came in?
No, I signed on for our account. As a whole, I'm as another host. And I can sign out and click on the link to see what happens. Do you want me to do that?
I wonder if we should try that, just to see what, because I got, I'm here, I'm covered, and I just want to make sure. I mean, if we can't get our committee chair on.
That's a bad thing.
Yeah.
So I will sign out of the meeting right now and sign in through the link?
Yeah.
And I will sign in back through our host account.
Alright, yeah, try that, because he says when I click, it says meeting locked by host.
Okay, I'll check in our account tool first.
Okay, that sounds good.
Okay, I'm leaving.
Okay.
Yeah.
Every morning. Hello. Oh, you're already set? Oh, I got you.
I'm in there already.
They'll be, they'll be calling you name.
Okay.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Michelle?
Yep.
And now joined through clicking the link on the agenda.
Okay, so it worked just fine for you.
Yeah, it did. However, I'm signed in, yeah, I'm.
Michelle?
Yes?
Can you give me a favor and look at your testimony slips and tell me the last one of the.
The last one would be, hold on, I gotta get them apart. I have numbered up to number 15. Okay, Bearbell. Oh, yeah. Hey, Bearbell, are you there? Hey, Bearbell.
Yes, Michelle, there is a problem.
No, I got it figured out. It's done.
Okay, because I signed out of our account and tried to join through the agenda and it says it's locked.
It's okay. It's open now. The security, I don't know. Something got accidentally hit that it had locked. I went into security. It's unlocked, so.
And there's Bob. Yay.
We're all good.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Bob.
Yeah, you're good.
Wonderful. Yep. Terrific. There's Karen that I had the long conversation with. Excellent. Well, that's good to go. I think I'll just leave this on for a while until I call the meeting to order.
Alright, that sounds good.
County boardroom looks a little deserted.
I just wanted to say good afternoon, everyone, to those participants that have zoomed in. If you are looking to testify, if you could just send a chat message to Land and Water, Michelle, or Land and Water, Bearbell. And then we'll kind of step you through that process, whether it be to actually be testifying or to go on the record for or against the formation of the Lake District.
So, Michelle, is this image okay?
Looks good.
Okay, good.
That was probably in the draft that I didn't say. So I just had to, you know, comment, so. And you put everyone else? And then I had. Get it all the way down, remember? One more, three more.
You're yielding my time.
Oh, huh?
You're yielding time.
How, how?
You're yielding my time. Yeah, you've ever seen all that, huh?
Oh, yeah.
Yield my time, but yield my time, but yield my time, it's really crazy. Yeah, are you sitting? I can't talk too much.
Oh, I would never say that. I'm gonna find my name card, here's my name card.
Just reaching out to anybody on the Zoom link that would like to testify or that would like to go on record for or against the Lake District. You can send a chat to Land and Water Michelle or Land and Water Bear Bell, or just say something now and we'll connect you up here. Did you hear me okay, Bear Bell?
I heard you fine.
Thank you.
Michelle, are you connecting to Sue?
Uh, yes, I got Sue. Thank you.
And Dennis, are you raising your hand to testify? You muted. You unmute yourself in the lower left corner. Go with your mouse to the lower left corner and there's a microphone.
There it is, it's on the iPad, it's the upper right corner.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Yes, I would like to testify.
Okay, Michelle, you got Dennis?
I've got Sue right now I'm working with, if you don't mind getting Dennis's.
Getting Dennis. Zoom meeting.
Okay, Dennis, do you want to talk to me or do you want to write to me via the chat?
I don't know how to chat, I don't know anything about.
Okay, then I will take your, I will take your information.
As far, as far as my address, my address, location?
And your name?
Dennis Southworth. S O U T H W O R T H.
And W O R T H?
Correct.
Okay, address?
3039 South Rifle Road.
Rifle?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And that's in Rylanda?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay. Um. And would you like to testify or register?
Testify.
Okay, what is your statement, in favor or in opposition or information only?
In favor.
Okay. I got you down.
Okay.
And we're gonna call later to take people, if they want to speak, that's what I'm taking you would like to do.
Okay, yes, I will unmute myself now, okay?
Yes, we will probably call out the names.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Bear Bell, I also have Bruce Hagan.
Okay.
Did you jot a time down for Terry?
Dennis, yes.
Uh, Dennis, I'm sorry.
12:34.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Jana.
Dennis Southworth had already registered to testify, so he did not need to do that again. I believe he's number six on the list.
Number six. Okay, I got it. So, let's see, Bear Bell, let me just verify, Dennis Southworth, 3039 South Rifle Road, Rylander, testifying in favor, correct?
That's correct, so I will take that off my list.
Okay, that sounds good, I've got him here as number six.
Bruce Hagan did already call?
Bruce Hagan already called? Okay, I'm looking through here.
If he did not register to testify, then he might be in one of the other piles.
Okay.
So, everyone, they're very happy about your desire to testify and register. However, if you already did so ahead of time of the meeting, there is no need to, to make it yourself or your desire for any of that known a second time. We got you on the list.
Thanks, Bear Bell.
Do we have a Jim Binder already registered?
I'm working on Sue Binder right now.
Jana, do we have a Jim Binder already?
I've got, I've got him right here.
Okay, then he's taken care of already.
Well, no, 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 I'm looking, I'm not saying I have him here, so hold tight.
I see.
Bear Bell, you're gonna have to confirm with Michelle, because I'm away from the mic, I'm at the registration table.
I do not have anything for Jim Binder.
Okay, would you like me to take Jim?
Uh, yes, I have Sue Binder, if we could just make sure that they are speaking separately.
Sue Binder is waving right now, would you like to say something, Sue? You're muted.
She only wanted to register to vote.
Okay, so you want to go on record in favor?
Yes.
Okay, I've got you down, we won't have you testifying, but I have you down in favor of the Lake District.
And my husband, Jim Binder, is also on. Registered to vote, but I think he has sent a chat message regarding that.
Yep, and he wanted, and Jim is also wanting to register in support, correct?
Yes, I do.
Bear Bell, I've got Jim down here, since I have that information, I'll just... Just copy it down here, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, Jim and Sue, I have you both down as registered in favor of the Crescent Lake District petition.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you both. Hey, Bear Bell, could you, um, could you address Terry Goldbach's text there, please?
Yes.
And Bruce Hagan, 2718 Green Bass. That is, if you don't mind, just confirming that you want to provide a statement of support of the Lake District, you wish to testify in support? And Bruce, can you hear me okay? Can you unmute for a second?
Good job. Good job.
Yeah.
Yeah, yours.
Yeah.
How does it feel?
Michelle, who's in the county boardroom now?
Uh, what, you mean as for people or exactly what do I, who?
Uh, committee members.
Um, I saw Jim Winkler. Um, I have, I do not know if Mitch is there yet or not, I am not, I'm in my office.
Yeah, I'm having trouble seeing it very clearly. So Jim's there, Mitch is supposed to come, he said he's gonna appear live.
Correct.
And Bob Toney is on, so.
I'm here, Bob, I'm here, I can hear you.
Okay, how about the county boardroom, Mitch, Mitch and is Jim, Jim, is Mitch there?
Hi, Bear. I just walked in.
Excellent. Terrific, we have a quorum, good. Okay, thank you. Okay, what about Brian Desmond and Carl?
Uh, Carl is in person, I know he was out helping Jana, so he's not sure if he's scurrying between Committee Room Two and the boardroom. I am not sure if I have seen Brian yet.
Okay.
What's new? I'll give you a call. I gotta think of my strategy. I didn't hear that. Didn't tell you this at that.
And here's a reminder to the group that if you don't want your conversation to be heard by the group, make sure that you're muted.
Hey, Bob, look who showed up.
Who is that masked man?
Okay, sounds good, do you mind catching that door? That might happen yet, thank you.
Bob, this is Karen Grosspire, I sent you a message, would you please read it?
Thank you.
Yeah, Karen, I'll have the people, um, identify themselves as they speak. Yeah, Michelle, with the owl in the county boardroom, is there a way to, uh, zoom in on whoever's speaking?
It should, um, it should go ahead. We, we practiced with it. That was what we were having a little issues to start with, Bob, at the beginning. Uh, once we get somebody up to the mic, uh, it was doing just fine. It should zoom into that person speaking. Right now, I think it's all over the place, because there's a lot of background noise.
Also, um, the county board member or committee member that would be speaking?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Yeah, that, that checked out earlier, so hopefully nothing's changed. I think, like I said, it's, it's gotten noisy there.
Yeah, and I'll have them, uh, I'm asking that, um, each person that speaks, like, if they make a motion or second a motion, that they say, like, mut, seconds, or something like that.
Okay, sounds good.
Yep.
Hey, Bob, can you hear me? Can you see me when I'm talking?
Use your microphone or turn it on. Make sure it goes green.
Okay, Bob, this is Jim. Can you see me now when I'm talking?
I, I can hear you, Jim, but I cannot see you. Uh, you're in the distance.
Yeah, Bob, the, the owl is not turning and everything.
Yep, you're, you're good. It's got you now.
So on my side, I have Mitch Ives, um, uh, as a participant, but I didn't, I don't see a picture of him. And I don't have Jim as a participant, per se.
We have, I can see you up in the corner. And then there's another screen showing the rest of the county boardroom, and then Mitch and I are down on the lower part of the screen. You may not have that.
Uh, try having Mitch say something. Have him unmute and say something.
Can you hear me now? I guess he can.
Yeah, we're, actually, we're seeing you guys just fine. When, uh, Mitch and or Jim, uh, speaks up, the owl does swivel over, so I see Jim and I see Mitch on the right side.
Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you too, Mitch.
Are you seeing, uh, Jim and Mitch separately?
No, I, I, they're in the same frame. Uh, when they talk, they're in that same frame. We'll see the, uh, the board up front, the video board, and then I'll see Jim and Mitch in that same picture. So you're not seeing a real close-up of them, but they are, the owl does swivel, and I do see them.
Okay, because I can see the podium, and it looks like possibly somebody's sitting in the audience, but I can't see, um, the two supervisors.
Do you have it in speaker view by chance, Bob?
I have no idea.
Um, if you hover up in the right corner, there's like a view button up there.
I see three dots and a mute.
Okay, do you see, let's see, uh, up in the right corner, you have, what do you have in the right corner? When you hover up in the right corner?
Three dots.
Okay, when you hit the dots, what are they?
Uh, mute, stop video, rename.
Okay.
Pin, pin video and hide self-view.
Okay. Um, let's see what else. Bear Bell, have you had any suggestions?
Wait a minute, how about speaker view?
There you go. Yep, do you have speaker, yeah, do you have speaker view hit?
Okay, now we got it. Okay, I just hit that and I can see you full screen.
Okay.
Why don't you have, um, why don't you have Jim say something?
Okay, uh, Jim? Jim Winkler, are you hearing us? Can you say something?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Keep talking if you don't mind, Jim.
I will keep talking. What would you like me to say?
How wonderful today is.
Public hearing, how's that?
Yeah, I can, I still can, I can see the podium with Jana there. I can see people sitting in the background, but I cannot see the, um, speaker. And are you guys around the county board table?
Hear me, this is Mitch.
I can hear you, Mitch, but I can't, again, I can't see you, um, around the table.
Bob, can you hear me? This is Carl.
I can hear you, Carl.
I, 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 yeah, I think what's happening is that we're only getting a few words out of them, and I think the owl is just taking, it needs a little bit more time to hone in and get over to them, is what I think what's happening, Bob.
Why don't you have, uh, Carl sing the Star Spangled Banner?
Carl?
So, Michelle, I, I'm, I have the Zoom on my phone. That's not gonna interfere with anything, is it? Because that seems to be working fine. Whenever you talk, you come on the screen.
Okay, now, now I can see Mitch. Now I can see Jim to Mitch's right.
Yep, we got it. And no, you're good, you're good, Mitch.
Thank you.
Is it my Zoom on? I did, because it seems to be working better than that screen.
And I know we had a whole bunch of, uh, additional people sign on to or come on to the Zoom meeting here. So if there is anybody in the Zoom audience that would like to register to testify, or if you would like to go on the record for or against the Lake District, we can take that information. Feel free to chat, use the chat button, uh, to connect to Land and Water Michelle or Land and Water Bear Bell. Or if that's a little uncomfortable for you with the chat, just, um, you could raise your hand or just give a shout out here, and we'll get you registered here to do one of those.
Room two on my phone, and that, that camera is just pointing up at the dry, dry erase screen in the ceiling.
Yeah, but that's not gonna track. I don't think that one's set up.
Oh, but it doesn't even show anybody in the room.
But it's just pointing up.
It's pointing up, right.
That may be by intent. They bring speakers in here from that one.
Oh, okay, okay, gotcha.
One, one thing I'm gonna ask committee members to do, and probably anybody else that's speaking, um, if you make a motion or you second a motion or have a question, uh, make sure you say, like, this is Mitch Ives, I second the motion. That way the court reporter will know who's speaking.
Carl is the other committee room full, too? Which one, the other committee room is that full? I gotta find, I, three seconds.
Ooh, okay.
Oh.
We got some feedback.
Michelle?
Yep.
Um, this, the, uh, other committee or, yeah, other public hearing room, is that being used, or is this a?
Nope, we do have.
Yeah, but everybody else is muted.
Uh, the last time that Carl popped in here, he said we had one person, uh, that was already in the overflow room. There might be more by now.
Okay, and we want to make sure that they have the opportunity to come to the podium to speak. They have a comment to make, right?
Yep, we'll make sure, we'll have Jana and or Carl, uh, to make sure we round up anybody in that extra room that, that would like to speak.
Okay, I have about four minutes until we, uh, begin the meeting. Is that about right?
So, looks good.
And shall we just continue at one o'clock and call the meeting to order at that time?
Sounds good, Bob.
Okay, very good.
Uh, this is Jana. Uh, currently there are two people, um, in Committee Room Two, and they are, um, the, the room that there is muted so that you can't see them, but I will go get them when they're in this call, and then we'll bring them up to.
Are they, John, are they able to hear the proceedings?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, the, the feedback that's occurring might be connected to somebody in the county, county boardroom, um, signed on to Zoom with the phone separately. So in, in order to, to avoid that, if anybody did that, they would need to mute that specific device unless they're talking and the owl isn't working.
Thank you, Bear Bell. I'm on the phone with Sue.
This is Meredith Craning. I'm the court reporter for today. Um, will we be muting everyone once the hearing starts?
Yeah, we'll ask everyone to mute, Arith, um, so we'll get everybody muted up, um, here. We'll make sure that you're not muted.
Okay.
And we won't, we won't touch your end of things. We'll just ask everyone on Zoom to mute, um, and then when we call on them, we'll kind of take it from there.
Okay, sounds very good. And so far, everyone, uh, that is connected by Zoom, I'm able to see who is speaking very easily. Those who are in the boardroom, it is fairly difficult to know who's talking, especially since I don't know any of them, so I appreciate that they'll all be introducing themselves and mentioning their name each time they speak. That'll be, that'll be perfect, and if they forget, I will remind them.
And Meredith, we, um, if you have any concerns at all about who's speaking or what was said, uh, you certainly stop us at that point and ask us to repeat or identify themselves.
Okay, thank you. I will do that.
Very good. Okay, I have one o'clock. Michelle, is everyone ready here?
I am ready. Bear Bell? Uh, I'm ready. Bear Bell hopefully is ready. I think we're good here, other than committee members.
Okay, um, I'm gonna call to order the meeting of the UW Extension Conservation Committee. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. When speaking today, please state your name when making a motion or seconding a motion, or asking question or commenting. So at that, I will entertain a motion to, um, approve today's agenda.
This is, this is, Tommy. This is Bob Tomy. I'll second that.
He said Jim Winkler moved and Bob Tomy seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, hearing none, motion carries, and the agenda is approved. Like to make a brief statement. United County Board assigns the duty of presenting for public hearing any request for proposed Lake District. Our purpose today is to allow citizens to comment on the proposed Crescent Lake Protection and Rehabilitation District. People commenting should state their name and address slowly and clearly for the court reporter. Also, try to be respectful of the event that's happening today and, uh, other people's opinions. I'd like, uh, our committee and staff to introduce themselves. I'll start. I'm Bob Mott, uh, county board member and chairman of the committee. Let's go to Jim.
Yeah, I'm Jim Winkler, uh, I'm a member of this committee and I represent Newbold.
Mitch?
Uh, Mitch Ives, District Hall, County Board Supervisor, which is part of the Crescent area, also the county representative for the Horsehead.
I'm sorry, also the county representative for the what?
For the Lake District, Horsehead Lake District in Lakeview.
Bob?
Uh, Bob Tomy, I'm a county supervisor and member of this committee. Uh, my district is District 11, which is the town of Crescent, and I am also a, uh, county representative on the Bear Lake District.
Thank you. Um, I'll also chime in with the districts, um, that I'm board member of. I am board member of the Squash Lake District, and also of the Midlake District, and those are, uh, positions that, uh, come from our Conservation Committee. That's how we are assigned as different districts. Staff, staff, uh, Bear Bell?
Yes, hello. My name is Peabody Eric. I'm working with, on United County Land and Water Conservation Department, and I'm helping to host this meeting today. Thank you.
Michelle?
Good afternoon, everyone. Michelle Soduska, Sonoma County Conservationist. Um, just want to say welcome to everyone, and I am also helping out on the Zoom end of things. So we'll try to help everyone as much as we can at this end.
Carl?
Earl Jenner, uh, Plante Zoney Conservation Director.
Brian?
I'm Brian Desmond. I'm Corporation Counsel for Oneida County.
Okay, is there anyone else, uh, Michelle, that we should speak to?
I think we're, uh, yep, Jana's, yep.
Okay, and this is, um, and Brian is, uh, going to speak next. He'll talk about the procedure of the hearing, uh, talk about the court reporter and so on. So Brian, take it away.
Thank you. Um, today's hearing is going to be a public hearing on the proposed Lake District for Crescent Lake. Today's hearing is, uh, for the committee to take comments on, um, whether people are either in favor or against the proposal for the Lake District. I should tell you that today is not the day that any decision will be made on this Lake District petition. After today's hearing, the Land Conservation Committee has three months within which they need to provide a formal report to the county board. Um, that report will contain information from this public hearing. Uh, it will review and, um, verify the signatures, um, and report to the board whether or not the 51% of the landowners or 51% of the land in the proposed district, if those measures have been met. Today is also not a time for question and answers from the public. Again, this is merely, uh, a time for the public to let the committee know what their feelings and thoughts are on this proposed Lake District. I should also note that, um, if someone has already stated what you wanted to say about the Lake District, it's perfectly acceptable to say that you agree, you know, with either someone who has spoken for the Lake District or someone who has spoken against the Lake District. In order to keep these things orderly, we certainly don't need a lot of, of repetition. You're certainly allowed to do that if you wish, but I think a lot of people here, whether for or against, will, will probably have the same reason. But I think a lot of people here, whether for or against, will will probably have the same reasoning. Lastly, within six months of today's public hearing, the county board is required to make a decision on whether or not to have this Lake District formed. So once they get that report, they'll have at least three months to consider it and come to a decision at a formal county board meeting. So that county board meeting will be posted. I assume that the Land and Water Conservation Department will give notice to, I believe his name is Mr. Peterson, who is in charge of this Lake District petition so that the word can get out as to when that meeting is going to be. We do have time limits today when people are speaking. First off, we will give 10 minutes to Mr. Peterson and his group that has proposed this Lake District so that they can give, I guess, what we could term a thorough explanation as to why they undertook this process and why they believe that it is necessary. After Mr. Peterson or the proponents' time, we will also give time to any town officials that would like to speak on behalf of the municipality. We'll give those folks five minutes. We will also give five minutes to anyone who represents a group of individuals. That could be a group that is represented to speak for or against the petition. And then we would ask that if you're going to represent a group or a municipality that you identify which group or municipality you are representing so that we have your comments clear in the record. Then all other individuals will be given three minutes to speak to the board committee if they so choose to make comments, whether they are for or against this petition. As we have already stressed, you can probably tell by my tone of voice and the cadence of my speech, please speak slowly and clearly as the court reporter needs to write down your name and your comments. That's very important here today. The court reporter's record will be made part of the official record of these proceedings as well as any of the comment forms that were filled out today and the paper slips that people used to register to speak today. I think that's all that I have to say here at this point. If I need to step in at any point for any legal reasons, I will certainly do that. And I hope that we can proceed with this in an orderly fashion. I believe that Bob is now going to give us a short overview of the Lake District formation process. And I will let Bob take the meeting back over at this point in time.
Thank you, Brian. I'd like to stress that try to keep background noise to a minimum. One of the things that the court reporter was a little concerned about was background noise and not being able to hear clearly the statements you're making. So far, it's been great. Yes.
The court reporter has asked me to just be aware that she may need a break or breaks at some point, depending on how long this meeting goes. If that needs to happen, I will ask the court reporter to make you aware of that. We may need a five to 10 minute break or breaks, just depending on how this meeting proceeds.
That that'd be fine. Thank you, Brian. And also note that, again, no decision will be made today. We're just taking public comment. And Brian will be the timekeeper. Okay, now I'm going to read the overview of the Lake District formation process. A Lake District can be formed by landowner's petition to the county board. You know, Onida County Board or Onida County received a petition from the Crescent Lake District on December 14, 2020. The county board appointed the Conservation and UW Extension Education Committee to conduct the public hearing. By law, Land and Water Conservation Department must hold a public hearing on the proposed Lake District within 30 days of receipt of the petition. A Class One Notice of the Public Hearing was published in the Northwoods River News on December 18, 2020. This public hearing is designed to accept public comments on the proposed Lake District. No decision will be made on that today. The committee is required to report its findings to the county board within three months of the hearing. Within six months of the hearing, the full count Onida County Board is required to issue an order granting or denying the petition to form a Lake District. In order for a county board to create the Lake District, the petition must be signed by either 51% of the owners of land within the proposed district or the owners of 51% of the land area within the proposed district. Each person whose name appears as an owner of real property on the previous year's tax roll is qualified to sign. The county board is required to issue a decision based on the following four findings. Number one, that the petition is signed by the requisite number of owners. Number two, that the district is necessary. Number three, that the public health, comfort, convenience, necessity of public welfare will be promoted by the establishment of the district. And number four, that the property included in the district will be benefited by the district's establishment. I'd like to introduce Onida County Conservationist Michelle Seduskas. And she's talking, she will talk now about the registration process, order of speakers, and so on. Michelle?
Thank you, Bob. Good afternoon, everyone. I just want to give a quick overview here. We requested those that wanted to testify to fill out registration slips. So if you came in and are in the county boardroom, those registration slips were at the front right when you entered. Also, for those participants on Zoom, we were asking those people that wanted to actually testify to chat with us or just raise their hand or say something. So we've got, I think to my count, right now, we have 20 people registered to testify. You also may, with those slips, you do not only have to testify, you can also just go on record for or against the Lake District. And that's perfectly fine, too. So you wouldn't actually be speaking at the the public hearing here, but you would be going on record in favor or of in opposition of the Lake District, of the formation of the Lake District. I'm not going to repeat the times Brian went through the time limits. My understanding also is that Brian Desmond is keeping timekeeping for the speakers. And I want to stress also what Brian Desmond had said earlier. If it is perfectly fine to agree with an earlier speaker, that there's nothing wrong with that instead of being repetitive. But if you feel that you want to, you know, testify and be repetitive, that's okay, too. So I think that's all I have here. I do have an order list of 20. And at the end of our registration slips, we will ask for anybody that did not sign one of those registration slips. So you do not have to have a registration slip to speak. We just try to keep things orderly here. And we'll make sure that we'll be asking for those wanting to speak to please do so. And we will be getting names and addresses down. So just bear with us if we don't have a form in hand with you.
Anything else, Michelle?
I think that'll do it.
Okay, and the order is determined by when the people registered?
Correct. They could phone in and register this past week. So we have quite a number of people that did that during the week. And from 12 o'clock to one o'clock on Zoom. So we've got a fairly good order here, but yes, time wise.
Very good. Thank you very much. Now I'll officially open the public hearing for the proposed Crescent Lake Protection and Rehabilitation District. And I'm going to call on Carl Genrick, who is the Director of Onida County Planning and Development. And he will read the official public hearing notice. Carl?
Good afternoon and welcome. My name is Carl Jenner. As I stated previously, I am the Director. And I apologize to the court reporter. I have a habit of reading very fast. So if you do need some of this information, it is available that we can get it to you as far as some of the legal descriptions and the comments that I'm making. The notice is hereby given that the Conservation UW Extension Education Committee will hold a public hearing on January 9, 2021, actually. In committee room number two of the Vennett County Courthouse. We also do have overflow in committee room number two, and we also are doing this meeting virtually via Zoom. The boundaries of the proposed, again, this is for a public hearing for the formation of the Crescent Lake District. The boundaries of the proposed district are as follows. The bounty described herein for the Crescent Lake District, the district lies wholly within Section 7, Section 8, Section 16, Section 17, Section 18, Section 20, and Section 21, Township 36 North, Range 8 East, in the town of Crescent, Onida County, Wisconsin. The district consists of recurring properties within the district boundary. GIS mapping available. Onida County survey maps that are available to Onida County Register D documents were used to transcribe the bounty description. Where appropriate, the specific survey map and or document are referenced with the description. Some bounty locations were additionally referenced to ensure the proper location was noted. The district generally described as of the district boundaries generally described as follows. Part of government lot one, lying in Section 7, Township 36 North, Range 8 East. Part of government lot three, part of government lot four. All lying in Section 8, Township 36 North, Range 8 East. Part of government lot one, part of government lot.
Excuse me, excuse me, just a moment. Somebody's speaker is not muted, and so it's cutting out the man speaking.
Thank you.
Part of government lot. Sorry, I may be rereading this. Part of government lot one, part of government lot two, part of government lot nine, and part of government lot 10, all lying in Section 16, Township 36 North, Range 8 East. Part of government lot one, part of government lot two, part of government lot three, part of government lot four, five, six. All lying in Section 17, Township 36 North, Range 8 East. Part of government lot one, part of government lot four, part of government lot five, all lying in Section 18, Township 36 North, Range 8 East. Part of government lot one, part of government lot two, part of government lot three, part of government lot four, part of government lot five. All lying in Section 20, Township 36 North, Range 8 East. Part of government lot one, all of government lot three, part of government lot four, part of government lot nine, and part of government lot 10. All lying in Section 21, Township 36 North, Range 8 East. This was published, it was published as a Class One Notice, which means only one insertion in the local paper. But it was a Class One Notice appeared on the Northwoods River News, December 18, 2020. I do have proof of publication in the file if anyone would like to see that. The agenda was posted in Onida County Courthouse Oldton Board on December 28, 2020. It was also pointed posted on the Onida County Lakes or OCLW.org website in 2020. It was also on the Crescent Lake, proposed Lake District page of the public hearing notice, Squash Lake District public notice, Squash Lake map of area, entire copy of the submission. No certified letters were mailed. We did send first class mail. 278 first class letters were mailed to all Crescent Lake District landowners during the week of December 14, 2020. If letters are returned, and as of today, as of 12:30 2020, eight first class letters returned. Five letters stated not deliverable, one letter stated no such number, and one letter had a forwarding address. Each letter was identified with a new address and resent by first class mail on or before December 30, 2020. We received one request to withdraw their name from the petition, and that's part of the file. We received various email comments in favor and in opposition. Seven persons sent their comments in favor of the Crescent Lake District, two with attachments, and one sent in comments in opposition to the Crescent Lake with attachments. We also, as Michelle stated, we just also did have, I think approximately 10 people called in to register in favor. Two people called to register in opposition. 15 persons called to register to testify in favor of the Crescent Lake. Five of those 15 sent a written copy of their statement. We also documented, or we also emailed documents were emailed to the following persons. I'm not going to read the list. It's very voluminous. We also gave notice to staff, Mike Brown, Portlay, Information, Brian Desmond, Corporation Counsel, Grasbier and Associates, who's the court reporter, Ryan Peterson, who submitted the petition. The late comments for the public record that are in favor, I'm not going to read the note or the comments into the record, but they are available here. We have a email from Mark and Melissa, M E R G N T H A L R, December 29, 2020, in favor. An email, Monday, January 4, 2021, from two Killmore in favor with an attachment. An email from Terry Goldbach, January 7, 2021. I'm also given an attach of their presentation in favor. Email dated January 7, 2021, from David Atkins, A K I N, in favor. An email dated January 7, 2021, from Mark and Amy Peterson, in favor. An email from dated January 7, 2021, Harvey Wolf, in favor. And then we just received this one, it was actually Friday, January 8, 2021. And this was in favor from Richard Lor, and I did see on the screen that I think he's present. But that was really talking about his presentation in favor. We had one email, sorry, email in opposition. And it says from Led Zepp, from Tom and Jane Meyer, not in favor. And that is the the summary of the written correspondence and the notice of public hearing. So I think that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Bob, you're muted.
Another question. Thank you, Brian. Another question for you, Carl, regarding the publication, the notice. You said it was in the River News, I believe. And then after that, you mentioned Squash Lake. Was it, did you mean Crescent Lake?
Yes, that was a good catch, Bob.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, let's continue. So now we'll have a representative of the proposed landowners district to give the petitioner's statement. The group will be given 10 minutes in total to discuss the need for the district. Several people may speak, but the total time allotted will still be 10 minutes. And Brian Desmond will be the time keeper for this. Ryan Peterson, I'm assuming, will be speaking. Is that correct?
He's coming forward.
Okay.
Yes, myself and Jim Gerke will be speaking on behalf of the.
Court reporter, are you hearing properly?
I I'm sure once they get up to the mic, I will be able to hear them better. Yes.
All right, great. Thank you.
And I'm removing this because perhaps my speech will be more clear at that point. I first I want to say, as my name is Jen Gerke, and I live at 60.
I, first, I want to say, as my name is Jim Gerke, and I live at sixty-seven fourteen Melody Lane, of Rhineland. And I have been a resident of Onedet County for thirty-one years. I've served on the Crescent Lake Association Board for twenty-two years. The last several years, I served as the Aquatic Invasive Species Coordinator. And we're very, very, very excited to be here today. We have a lot of things that we would like to tell you in the shorted time as we have. And so I will be talking a little bit quickly, because I've given a printed copy of my comments to people here, so that they don't have to rely just on what they heard and recollected. Our whole approach to invasive species on Crescent Lake has been very conservative. We have been moving gradually and slowly for a number of years. We believe in research, we believe in education. We believe in including members, including residents that aren't members, and including guests when we meet and talk and take action. Many of the Lake Association meetings have had guest speakers over the years. We have found, in recent years, we have been so busy allocating our time and energy to invasive species, especially Eurasian water milfoil, that we practically have crowded out the opportunity for other kinds of.
Sir, sir, if I could just have you say, especially the, what were the words before milfoil?
Eurasian water milfoil.
Thank you.
We have had newsletters to various numbers over the years. We have a website that we have created that we're very proud of. And so we think we have done a good job of keeping communication open with, again, our members and with other Lake property owners. We have an interesting thing that we've formed.
I'm sorry, your voice, sir, I'm sorry, your voice cut out.
Looking away a little bit, I'm sorry.
Well, it was, it was because someone rang into Zoom, so go ahead.
We have formed an Aquatic Invasive Species Response Team. And this consists of eight members of the association. We have written and have been awarded grants to somewhere in the neighborhood between a hundred and eighty thousand and two hundred thousand dollars. And we have worked to accomplish those things by always staying in touch with and under the guidelines allowed by the Department of Natural Resources. We have recruited, trained, and scheduled over eighty volunteers to meet people at the boat landing, inform them about invasive species, plants, and animals. They have contributed thousands of hours and met thousands of boats, boats at the landing, so that they could do inspections as a help to them in learning about the invasive species. We have surveyed the lakes since two thousand and ten, crossing rates every hundred feet. And we did that a couple of times a year. And not only did we look for invasive plants, but we logged every single plant that we found. And we did that in the spring and in the fall. We noted the bottom of the lake, whether it was mud or rock or sand. And we identified every single plant with the help of some very talented people who happen to live on our lake. And you'll be hearing a little bit more about that later. Last year, we used digital mapping to improve our process of determining what the lake bottom is like in terms of the vegetation on the lake bottom. This was a two thousand seven hundred dollar initiative that was taken under by the association. We have trained forty-plus shore monitors who regularly walk, wade, kayak, or otherwise search the shore of the lake for invasive species. And doing that, sometimes they're searching as deep as fifteen feet, because the invasive species are in that whole entire area. We have tried to involve ourselves with other agencies. Crescent Lake has been a member of the Onedet County Lakes and Rivers for many, many years. We have worked with the Sheriff's Department to have them come out to the lake. In fact, during the years when it wasn't being done free, we were raising extra money to hire extra hours of Sheriff's Department people to be on the water. The Molik Indian Tribe has awarded us a four thousand dollar stipend to help protect Crescent Lake. We have had the Great Lakes Council speakers to our meetings, at one point at least. We work with the University of Wisconsin, Lonology Department, and many other groups in Wisconsin. We work with groups in Michigan, Minnesota, and some other states in terms of our research, especially regarding Eurasian water milfoil. We've made trips to the Upper Peninsula to meet with and talk to people with, about the LIT line, which is a way of administering a chemical into the lake. We have gotten information from the Lake Wollcom people, and from, we've tried to learn from Manson Lake and a lot, a lot of other lakes. In two thousand six to two thousand nine, we did a lake management grant. We hired heirs and associates to help us with that. This, the bill to heirs alone was twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. So these numbers are just getting bigger and bigger. When I first got on the board, the treasurer used to take out the checkbook and read the checks that were written for Crescent Lake Association, and they were for coffee at the meetings, and for incidental things like that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the last part you said. Just make sure you speak nice and slowly and clearly into that microphone, that, about the, the checks that were written.
Miscellaneous, other miscellaneous checks like that. As of this July, the, and at their urging of the response team, the Crescent Lake Association Board of Directors appointed the committee of five to look at getting further involved as a Lake District. The reasons we need the Lake District are because EWM is multiplying exponentially in Crescent Lake. In two thousand fifteen, we had one plant, that's what was discovered, as far as we know. Two thousand sixteen, we had colonies of plants. Two thousand twenty, we had many, many acres of dense plants, over fifteen feet tall, interfering with boat traffic and recreational activities. Grant monies are unsure. More and more lakes are encountering invasive species and applying for grants. And grant money is not being increased anywhere near as, as quickly as the invasive species are being introduced and spread. There is major support from the Lake property owners for the work that the association has done for the last forty years. We have easily solicited petitions endorsing the formation of the Lake District from sixty-five percent of the property owners. And would have secured more if it had not been for COVID and the end of the summer. We believe that the reason some owners might not have supported the petition is because, number one, they couldn't persuade themselves to vote for more taxes. That's human nature, I guess. And number two, some people are really concerned about introducing any kind of a purpose site to take care of plant life on the lake. And there's always going to be some population that is, they're concerned, more concerned than they can be assured. The lake is full of, is a full recreational lake, as you know, if you've been driven by the lake ever, and I'm sure all of you have. We have appreciated the assistance of Mike Brown Portle and his staff, and Michelle Sadowskis and her staff, as well as support from some of this committee's individuals. Thank you, Onedet County Land and Water Conservation Committee and UW Extension Committee, for helping us. Important step in the history of Crescent Lake.
Brian, how are we doing on time?
We have one minute remaining.
One minute.
Hello, my name is Ryan Peterson, Chair of the Crescent Lake District Subcommittee. And I want to thank the Conservation Committee for allowing our group to be here today, to advocate for the creation of a Lake District on our beloved lake. I want to continue Jim's comments on the growing list of reasons for the need for a Lake District by diving into the financial impact of invasive plant species on Crescent Lake. A study was conducted in two thousand eight by UW Madison on lakes in Vilas County, describing, amongst other factors, the financial impact that milfoil can have on property values. There were several significant findings from the studies, but the most significant, in my opinion, was that lakefront properties on lakes affected by EWM lose an average of thirteen percent in value. If properties on Crescent Lake were to lose thirteen percent of their total value, that would result in a total property value loss of over nine point four million dollars. Tangible impacts will be seen by all the taxing bodies that depend on annual property taxes as well. Based on the average taxing rate of properties on Crescent Lake, there would be an annual loss of approximately a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. On the annual basis, Rhineland School District would lose over seventy-four thousand dollars. Onedet County would lose twenty-one thousand one hundred dollars. The town of Crescent will lose twenty thousand eight hundred dollars. And finally, Rhineland Library and Mickel Lake College would each lose twenty-four hundred dollars.
That's our time, Brian Desmond, if you want to wrap it up with a final thought, they'll allow that.
I just want to thank the Conservation Committee once again for letting us be here today. And a vote for a Lake District today is a vote for a brighter future for Crescent Lake, thank you.
And sir, the, sir, the written comments that you were reading from, would you be able to provide those to someone who can? Maybe Mr. Mott or Miss Sadowskis?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, is there, is there somewhere he can place those, that people can place written comments right now?
John, are you there?
Yeah, John, John does have a number of the printouts, but she should just be right out the door there as well. We'll make sure that we get all those as much as we can.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, are there any other representatives of landowner groups who wish to speak? If so, come to the microphone, please, the podium.
I'll be happy to put in my vote in favor of the Lake District. I am the, I'm Don Stone, and I live at twenty-nine seventy-six Wassau Road in Rhineland. And I hold the proposition of the Crescent Lake Association President. And although I'm not actually representing the Crescent Lake Association Board, today I am representing myself in favor of the Lake District, but the board does all support the Lake District. I've been on the lake, my husband's had the home that I live in.
I'm going to have to stop you, ma'am, for a minute. If you are speaking as an individual, you would have to speak later. Right now, we're looking for representatives of groups.
All right, welcome, all right.
We'll talk to you later. Okay, are there any representatives of groups that wish to speak at this time?
We have someone coming.
Okay. Your name, address, and which group you're representing.
Hi, I'm Maria Rudessa, my address is twenty-seven fifty Bible Camp Road, and that is in Rhineland.
Can you spell your last name for me, Maria?
R-U-D as in dog, E-S as in Sam, I-L-F. All right, that's frigging me, I just came running from conference room two. So, all right, I am the Executive Director at Crescent Lake Bible Camp. And I also serve on the board for the Crescent Lake Association as the Vice President. We have been part of the Crescent Lake community since nineteen thirty-three, and are actively involved in the work being done to solve the AIS situation. Over the last few years, I have seen and been a small part in the energy and thought poured into the research, discussions, meetings, and know that the effort put into finding solutions by various members of our lake community have been incredible. I have personally toured the lake and have seen the expansion of the Eurasian water milfoil. I have seen the homes that have had their swim and boating areas clogged and destroyed. I know firsthand the struggle to safely harvest this invasive species, as my staff and I have put in hours to remove it from our own waterfront. I have watched boats tear into areas that need protecting, and picked up the fleet, the floating pieces of the plant from the water to keep it from infesting other shorelines. At Crescent Lake Bible Camp, we intentionally control access to the water via our locked boat launch, ensuring that each boat is inspected and the owner shown areas to avoid before they are allowed on the water. But all of the work done by all of the teams and the people you're going to hear from, it hasn't been enough. The Lake District will provide financial support to those working endless hours to protect our lake. It will take the latest research and focus it on managing this problem through the best methods possible. I believe in the people who have been doing this work. I also believe that without focused, funded effort, we are going to lose the ability to enjoy Crescent Lake on a greater scale. It breaks my heart to think about all of the families, more than just our campers, who have such a history on this lake, who were raised on its shores, and who are now raising the next generation on the shores, that are going to lose the ability to do so. I encourage you to support the formation of a Lake District, so that we can remain on the leading edge of the AIS management and not become a story of what could have been. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other representatives of landowner groups who wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next group. Are there any representatives of government agencies who wish to speak? Again, any representatives of government agencies who wish to speak? Hearing none, we'll go on to the next group. Are there any representatives of non-governmental agencies who wish to speak? Again, any representatives of non-governmental agencies who wish to speak? All right, I'd like to go back to Michelle, our county conservationist. Michelle, we'll call on individual landowners who wish to speak. The order was determined by the order in which the request was received. Again, please limit your comments to three minutes. Please speak slowly and clearly. Please give your name and address for the court reporter and the record. If you agree with the previous speaker, simply say, I agree with Jim Jones's comment, and that would be sufficient. If you want to go any more detail, you certainly can. All right, Michelle, take it over, please.
Sorry, everyone, I had, I was muted. Thank you, Bob. I do have a total of twenty-one registration slips here, so I will take those in order. At the end of the slips, we'll make sure that, A, that we have all the registration slips, that I haven't missed anybody. I do have one that I will read for someone that did do a chat message, so I'll make sure that gets read into record. And I, upfront here, I will mention the name, their address. And if they want to repeat name, that's perfectly fine, but I'll try to get this in hand here, so we have it on the record. Okay, so these are, once again, three-minute testimonials. So speaker number one, and I realize there might be speakers in committee room two. So we'll be a little patient here, if our speaker is in committee room two and needs to take a little bit of a longer walk.
And would you ask each speaker to make sure that we're aware if they are for or against formation of the district?
Yes, would you, would you like me to say that, Bob, or would you like them? Because I've got that information right on the, the slip.
I think you could introduce them and say, your understanding is that they're either for or against. I think you could introduce them and say, um, that your understanding is that they're either for or against.
Okay, I'll take care of that. Okay, uh, let's see, so we'll do speaker number one, which is Mark and Melissa Mergenthaller, six-seven-one-six North Melody Lane out of Rylander. And we have them in favor of the Crescent Lake District petition. So I'll turn it over to them.
Would you spell their name, please, Michelle?
Yep, I have M as in Mary, E-R-G-E-N-T-H-A-L-E-R.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is Mark Mergenthaller. And I did send an email with my, uh, voice of support for the Lake District. And, uh, I guess in the means of saving time, I don't need to reread that at this time.
And I do have that here, Mark. Uh, we do have a copy of that, and that will be in the record, and we'll make sure that gets to our court reporter.
Okay.
So I understand all those comments that we have received will be an addendum to the reports. Is that right?
This is Brian, Brian Desmond, yes, as part of the report, all the emails that we have received, uh, prior to today's public hearing will be made part of the record. I, I should note that the public hearing is the only time for people to, um, add information to that public, uh, record. There are periods of public comment at future UW Extension Conservation Meetings. However, those, uh, comments made at those meetings will not be made part of the public hearing record, just so that everyone's clear as to what's going to be submitted as part of the public hearing record.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Uh, we'll just put you on record here in favor. Okay, speaker number two, uh, is Cindy Hermel, H-E-R-M-E-L, six-seven-one-zero Melody Lane out of Rylander. And they would like to testify in favor of the Crescent Lake District petition.
Thank you. Um, I serve on the Crescent Lake Association Board as the AIS Coordinator and Grant Writer, and I'm also a member of the Response Team. Thank you for the opportunity to express my support for the formation of a Crescent Lake District. Since its discovery in twenty fifteen, Eurasian water milfoil containment has been a challenge and a priority for Crescent Lake residents. Three twenty thousand dollar DNR Detection and Response Grants, along with Crescent Lake Association member donations, have funded a multifaceted EWM Adaptive Management Plan, which includes hand-pulling, dashboard harvesting, and spot herbicide treatment. Unfortunately, over the five years, EWM has spread from one small sighting in the North Bay to lake infestation around the entire shoreline. The DNR requires recipients of surface water grants to conduct mapping and point intercept surveys by professional-
I'm sorry, to conduct, you cut out "to conduct" an- annual?
Pre- imposed bed mapping and point intercept surveys by professional consultants. The Crescent Lake Res- uh, Association is responsible for the one thousand six hundred dollar cost per survey. Over two years, consultant surveys and end-of-year reporting fees total a minimum of seven thousand four hundred dollars or thirty percent, thirty-seven percent of the grant amount. A two-year Crescent Lake Management Grant process beginning in twenty nineteen has been completed. The plan reflects the input of over sixty percent of Crescent Lake property owners. While EWM management remains a priority, the resident survey responses identified additional areas of interest. Plan's objectives also include-
I'm sorry, I apologize. You cut out again. I don't want to miss it. Survey responses identify additional areas of-
Interest and concern. The plan's objectives also include habitat restoration and preservation that address resident concerns over shoreline erosion, water contamination through runoff, and decreased canopy and understory in the littoral zone. A partnership with the Oneida County Land and Water Conservation Department to educate and implement healthy lakes' best practices will be the beginning steps to address habitat improvement. Residents also identified decreased fishing opportunities and voter safety issues as areas of concern. These recreational issues require education and implementation strategy development that will require financial and volunteer support. The creation of a Crescent Lake District will provide increased capacity, not only for the continued fight against EWM, but would provide additional resources to tackle the broader scope of resident interest and desire for addressing other Crescent Lake improvements and enhancements.
Your time is up. This is Brian Desmond. Your time is up. If you could please wrap up your thoughts.
Such efforts will preserve Crescent Lake as a natural resource we all appreciate and enjoy. Thank you.
And ma'am, would you, um, submit your written, uh, statement, please? Could you leave what you've read? Thank you.
Okay. Uh, speaker number three, Terry Goldbach, G-O-L-D as in David, B as in boy, A-C-H. Address is two-seven-zero-four Bible Camp Road, Rylander. And, uh, they would like to testify, testify, I'm sorry, in favor of the Crescent Lake District petition. And I believe, uh, Terry is on, uh, Zoom.
Okay, um. Hello, my name is Terry Goldbach, and I would like to thank you for taking the time to hold this meeting today. As a longtime member of the Crescent Lake Association, a former Crescent Lake Association Board Member, the current Chairman of the Crescent Lake Invasive Species Response Team, I would like to speak in favor of the Lake District for Crescent Lake. In twenty nineteen, my wife Wendy and I received the Friend of the Lake Stewardship Award from the Oneida County Land and Water Conservation Committee for our efforts to protect the lake. I have worked with the DNR and attended DNR meetings to address invasive species and have been involved in activities to combat the spread of Eurasian water milfoil on Crescent Lake for at least ten years. These activities demonstrate my interest and desire to be a good steward to Crescent Lake. As a Crescent Lake property owner for almost forty years and a full-time resident for twenty years, I feel the Crescent Lake District will be an asset to maintaining and improving the ecology of the lake by providing a financial means to do so. The Lake District offers the Crescent Lake property owners an opportunity to be actively involved in the ecology of the lake by broadening the ability to raise funds to address invasive species. Over the last two years, we have spent over eighty thousand dollars in our efforts to slow down the spread of Eurasian milfoil in the lake. As it continues to spread, our expenses will quickly increase, compromising our ability to adequately manage the issue. It has been difficult over the last few years to raise funds, and the Lake District would assist in funding lake-related EWM issues, which the township and the county are unable to support financially. In conclusion, I am in favor of forming the Lake District, as does sixty-five percent of the lake property owners, and feel the Crescent Lake District will offer a financial means to maintain and improve the ecology of Crescent Lake. I encourage this committee to approve the formation of the Crescent Lake District. Thank you.
Okay, uh, then we have speaker number four, uh, which I do have a, um, printed uh, document for, just to let, uh, everyone know. We have Ti- uh, Tim, I'm sorry, Tim Kilgore, K-I-L-G-O-R-E. Address two-nine-four-zero Wausau Road in Rylander. And Tim would like to testify in favor of the Crescent Lake District petition.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, hello and good afternoon to the Oneida County Conservation Committee and my fellow neighbors of Crescent Lake. My name is Tim Kilgore, and as Michelle mentioned, these comments have been previously submitted in writing. My wife Patty and I have been fortunate and blessed to be property owners on Crescent Lake since nineteen ninety-six. And like everyone here today, we enjoy the lake and care about its health now and for future generations. And my wife and I are also excited to become year-round residents in the next couple of years. I volunteered to become a member of the Crescent Lake District Subcommittee because I feel its formation is crucial for maintaining the overhaul, overall health of the lake. I respect and thank the work of many volunteers of the Crescent Lake Association and the DNR for their years of effort to protect our lake and fight the onslaught of EWF. But the challenge is growing, and the costs are rising. The formation of the Crescent Lake District is a needed step in the ongoing fight to protect our lake. Throughout my years, I participated in numerous community and charitable activities, and I can say that soliciting funds is always challenging. But my fellow Subcommittee members and I were committed to the mission of telling the story and collecting the needed number of petitions. We went door-to-door, asking residents for some of their time to discuss the formation of a regulatory body and the likelihood of an additional tax increase. The five of us divided the two-hundred-and-forty parcels, and we went to work. We spent many summer weekend afternoons presenting and discussing the need for a lake district to our neighbors. It was a nice boost to my daily step count. Truth be told, I met a lot of really nice people who are equally concerned about EWF and some of the other lake issues. Our sixty-five percent signature rate confirms the residents' support for the district, and the few who refused to sign were polite, do care about the lake, but had their reasons not to sign my petition. Our talks were always friendly, and even if we were not successful in obtaining the signature, we exchanged information, gathered input on residents' concerns, and wished each other a good day. In closing, this has been a positive experience, and I ask for your vote and support of the Crescent Lake District. I believe the health of our lake depends upon it. Thank you, and have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore.
Okay, uh, our next speaker is Connie Anderson, and I'm going to spell the last name. Address three-zero-two-one South Rifle Road, Rylander. And Connie would like to testify in favor of the Crescent Lake District petition.
As previously stated, I've submitted my written comments, uh, prior to my opinion here. Uh, my name is Connie Anderson. As Michelle has already told you, I've been a property owner and resident on Crescent Lake for thirty-one years. I've been a member of Crescent Lake Association since nineteen ninety-eight. I've served as Secretary, Vice President, and President of that association. I've done boat inspections at the boat landing as part of their Clean Boat, Clean Waters program, and it was most disappointing to learn that our beautiful lake was infested with the dreaded EWM in two thousand and fifteen. The Association has worked tirelessly to control the spread, but alas, in spite of thousands of hours of volunteer labor and dollars, the density of Eurasian milfoil has grown beyond our ability to control it. This is the reason that the Association decided to explore forming a district. I'm a member of the Subcommittee to Form that District. I distributed petitions to lake property owners in my neighborhood. By far, most people understood the need to do something to rescue our lake from degradation to the point that fishing and recreational use was no longer possible, and our property values would decline. The most common concern was that this was an additional tax. When I explained that once a district is formed, everyone living on the lake pays a small portion to cook to the cost of controlling U- U- EWM, rather than relying on donations from a very few people, everyone living on the lake benefits from a lake where invasive plants don't interfere with these activities. Taxing entities also benefit if our property values remain where they are-
I'm sorry, ma'am. Um, ma'am, could I have you start that sentence over and just slow down a little bit for me?
Taxing entities also benefit if our property values remain where they are or increase. Another speaker will cover this topic in greater detail. Another concern expressed was, "Who decides how the money is spent?" It was explained that it was the property owners who decide at the annual meeting as to how the district spends the money and what projects will be undertaken. Most people would believe this is quite a democratic way to manage an organization. Thank you for your opportunity to speak on behalf of the Subcommittee to Form the District. We very much appreciate your support. I have some additional comments that I, um, obtained last night from a longtime fisherman. I'm going to call it fishing for decades. Fishing has changed dramatically over two to three years since Eurasian milfoil has become so dense that fish are unable to swim into the areas to find food. Fishermen are unable to pull a lure through the dense milfoil.
I'm sorry, ma'am. Could you start with fishermen are unable to?
Pull a lure through these dense beds. The whole pattern of fish, location of fish, fish has changed. Muskie are now their usual locations. They won't go into dense Eurasian water milfoil areas. Walleye swan in beds have become choked with EWM. The walleye population has drastically declined. These are comments from a well-seasoned fisherman who's lived and fished on Crescent Lake for decades. Fishes three times a day, most of the days of the summer, has the first docking and the last dock out in the winter, or in the fall. Thank you.
Okay, uh, next up is Dennis Southworth. Address is three-zero-three-nine South Rifle Road, Rylander. And Dennis would like to testify in favor of the Crescent Lake District petition.
Thank you for, for allowing me the time to, to testify with this formation of the District. I would like to completely agree with the fol- following comments of Jim Gurkey, Ryan Peterson, Maria Rudessel, Cindy Hermel, Terry Goldbach, Tim Kilgore, and Connie Anderson. But with that, I would like to add, uh, one, some additional comments, and that is, working with the, the dash harvesting boat, which is dash is diver-assisted suction harvesting. The last, it, it, working with that boat for the last two years has given me a better insight into the ongoing spread of Eurasian milfoil on Crescent Lake. And with that, working around the lake, every shoreline with approximately one to two feet in depth has milfoil in that area. So i- it, in essence, it is spread throughout the whole lake as, as Cindy has, has mentioned. Just another comment with regards to the Crescent Lake Districts and District residents, through education and revenue, will be greatly assisted in controlling and the spread of milfoil and will allow us to better enjoy our lakes. I am the past president of the Lake Association and strongly encourage our residents to vote in favor of this forming this Lake District. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, uh, Donna Stone. Uh, last name spelled S-T-O-N-E. Address of two-nine-seven-six Wausau Road, Rylander. And Donna would like to testify in favor of the Crescent Lake District petition.
Well, and I, I was already up here once, so I, I actually won't really be speaking very much more. I am the President of the Crescent, Crescent Lake Association Board, and I am definitely in favor of the, and I appreciate your time and attention to this matter. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is Alan Jansen, and Alan spelled A-L- And Alan spelled A-L-L-A-N, Jansen, J-A-N-S-S-E-N. Address of 2821 Green Bass, out of Rylander. And Alan would like to testify in favor of the Crescent Lake District petition.
Hi, just a correction, it is A-L-A-N.
Sorry about that, Alan.
My name is Alan Jansen, as you know now. Thank you very much for your time. I reside at 2821 Green Bass Road, having owned the lake property, front property since 1981 to present, with the exception of three years while I was employed on the road. I participated in the DNR's Wisconsin Citizen Lake Monitoring Program on the lake from 1986 through 1997, and again from 2007 to present. This involves testing, documenting for water clarity, oxygen, temperature, phosphorus, and chlorophyll levels throughout the summer.
Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt you. If you could please bring the microphone closer to your mouth, I can, sometimes the shuffling of papers is interfering with what you're saying. Start with the word phosphorus.
Phosphorus and chlorophyll levels throughout the summer. Is that better?
Yes, and please slow down.
Over three minutes now. In tracking the number of winter days the ice is present throughout the years, I have been active with the Lake Association, am currently on the board, as well as being active with clean boats, clean waters, and also shore monitoring for EWM. A lot of this collected data has been used for past and the recently drafted lake management and planning documents. These are used for future, successful management of the lake's health. I'm also on the Lake District Subcommittee. This experience of many hours on the lake has shown me the changes over the years, some good, some bad. The greatest impact on me is the presence of invasive species currently EWM. Through my shore monitoring of my assigned area, I've seen it grow in the last five years from absent to slowly then rapidly advancing toward my own personal property. I expect it to arrive this coming summer. All the bays that I've used for fishing and pleasure boating have exploded with the mill foil. It's hard to believe it grows at such a rapid pace, having never seen it before 2015. During my door-to-door campaign to support the district by obtaining signatures, I found that all the three of 24 owners were concerned about the mill foil. I heard of many ideas that did explain, excuse me, but I did explain to each owner that it takes money to manage the mill foil. It was often suggested that everyone just pitch in $500 and get rid of it. I educated that, one, we can only expect to manage it, not eradicate it. And two, if everyone would want to contribute a large sum, they would have done this by now, which is not happening. So with the approval of creation of the district, we would attain several goals. One is to generate a stable town of funds to deal consistently with invasives. Two, this would create an equitable way for all to contribute, rather than counting on donations and DNR grants, as these are inconsistent and cannot always be relied on. Other lakes are having the same challenge in financial needs. There is only so much grant money. With the Lake District, everyone has a voice in the future of this lake. All, therefore, all actions of the district are approved by the majority, which is very democratic and keeps a break on unnecessary taxing. Thank you.
And sir, if you could drop your comments off with the person at the door who's collecting those, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Roger Shandley. Address of 3035 South Rifle Road, Rylander. And Roger would like to testify in favor of the Crescent Lake District petition.
Good afternoon. My name is Roger Shandley, 3035 South Rifle Road, Crescent Lake. I and my family have been Crescent Lake homeowners for 35 years. My wife Mary and I have been Lake Association members for 30 years. And upon my retirement, became a member of the Association Board. I continued on the board for eight years, then chairing, chairing, or bond chairing for various committees to this date. Currently, I'm a member of the first response team and have been since the inception. Currently, I chair our volunteer lake monitors, a group of 50-plus members, of which our duties are to monitor and appointed areas of Crescent Lake for EWM, and then mark the location. This is identified and then available or marked for the harvesting by our dashboard. Activity records are kept and provided to the state in support of current grants. I have worked with the DNR and attended meetings to address invasive species on Crescent Lake, along with combating of mill foil for at least eight years. As generations change on Crescent Lake and volunteers become more difficult to commit, the financial needs to maintain and improve the ecology of the lake must be met. I do favor the forming of a lake district for Crescent Lake. And I do encourage this committee to approve the formation of this district. Thank you, and I have supplied notes for the record.
Okay, our next speaker, and I just probably need a direction on this one here. Maria Rudisil, I believe, spoke earlier for an organization. I did have her as number 10 speaker here. I'm not sure if she's speaking individually as well. I'm not sure if Maria is still here or not. Sorry about that.
That's okay, and I can speak for Crescent Lake Level Camp, as that's how we're connecting in with the district conversation, so thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on. Let's see, next up is John Dusenberry. D as in David, U-S-E-N-B-E-R-Y. Address of 3135 Pleasure Point Road, Rylander. I believe John is on Zoom and wishes to testify in favor of the Crescent Lake District petition. Sorry.
Thank you very much for offering me the, how am I doing?
We hear you, John.
Okay, thank you again for offering me this opportunity to come before you and speak in favor of the formation of Crescent Lake District. I have had a history on Crescent Lake for approximately nine years. Many of those years, I have been a volunteer as a shore monitor. Also at the boat landing as a monitoring boats coming in and out of our lake. I have been a hand puller, I guess you could call it, of Eurasian mill foil. Personally, as diving on my own and also diving with the dashboard. I have seen the infestation of Eurasian water mill foil advance from one end of the lake to the other. And I, like many landowners or property owners on Crescent Lake, have become very concerned with its rapid growth and rapid takeover of Crescent Lake. My comments are very much, very much mimic those who've come before me, who have testified in favor of the formation. And to save time, I will just say again that I am here and test, to testify in favor of the formation. And again, thank you for this opportunity to come before you and do that. Thank you and have a good afternoon.
Okay. Next up, speaker number 12, we have John Knutson. Spelling K-N-U-T-S-O-N. The address is 2825 Green Bass Road, Rylander. We have the registration slip marked for information only, but we just want to verify that with John if where you want to go.
I think I'd like to express some opposition to the petition. By way of introduction, I've been spending time on Crescent Lake since 1955. Our family has owned property since 1961, which was conferred to me in 1980. I have a long history of active participation in the Crescent Lake Association. And when my University of Iowa obligations permitted, I worked in terms of trying to abate invasive species at the boat landing. It's somewhat ironic that I'm speaking in opposition to a lake district, since I was an advocate for establishing a lake district years ago. And I met with nothing but opposition at the time. The reason that I'm concerned about this current petition is actually in terms of its scope. I'm troubled by the fact that it focuses exclusively, or almost exclusively, on the Eurasian water mill foil problem, which I think is a terrific problem that we have to address. But it's not the only problem. And lake health reflects more than just one invasive species. I'm troubled by the fact that the petition ignores the recently developed lake management plan with regard to lake health. And I'm also somewhat concerned about the boundaries of the lake district. The health of the lake is determined not just by the households and the properties that are in the riparian zone, but are also, where the lake is also impacted by properties in the drainage district and how those properties are maintained. So I actually am more concerned about the scope of the lake district. And I think it's limiting it to lake shore properties is a problem. And finally, let me say that my opposition has been suggested that opposition would arise from people who are opposed to taxes. But I'm on record as being an unabashed supporter of the payment of taxes. I think taxes are essential for the common good. And I'm not in opposition because the possibility of an increased levy. The question is how that levy is expended and how the decisions are made. And finally, I'm also not opposed to constraints on property owners to embrace environmentally sound practices. So those two have been attributed to opposition. They don't apply to me. So I, and I will send written comments that are congruent with what I've said so far. And I think that's pretty close to three minutes.
Okay. Next up, I do have a note on this email registration. Is, it is for Harvey Wolf, W-O-L-F-F. The address of 2929 South Rifle Road, Rylander, Wisconsin. And Harvey would like to testify in favor of the Crescent Lake District petition. And I just was wondering, my understanding was he could not be here, but there, is there someone in the audience that is prepared to read his testimony? If not, I do have a copy here and I will read that.
Mr. Goldbach is raising his hand, Michelle.
Okay, Mr. Goldbach, go right ahead. Thank you, Brian.
Mr. Goldbach, you are on mute.
Thank you. I am reading a note from Robin and Harvey Wolf. Address 2929 South Rifle Road on Crescent Lake. And I believe this has been sent in via email. From Robin and Harvey, then, I have, we have been property owners on Crescent Lake for 42 years. My wife and family on the lake for 58 years, including her parents, grandmother, two uncles, two aunts, and a cousin. All own separate properties. We enjoyed fishing in the summer and ice fishing in the winter, as well as swimming, skiing, and all water sports. Being a property owner for 42 years, we've seen many changes to the lake. When we first bought our property off on South Rifle Road, our beach was weed-free, but for the past few years, we haven't been able to put our raft in because of the growth of Eurasian mill foil. We can't swim on our beach. Our neighbors can't use their jet ski because the weeds plug it up. Ice fishing in front of our cottage used to be great, but is now a waste of time. Fishing in the summer is nothing like it used to be. Even driving our pontoon boat around the lake, staying well out from shore requires us to stop periodically to remove weeds from the prop, many of which are just floating from other boat traffic. We need to be proactive. I've personally spent time on the dive boat, attended meetings, helped with mapping GPS coordinates to determine where the EWM was spreading, and worked with my wife at the boat landing to educate boaters about clean waters and clean boats in the hope of stopping the spread of EWM. Even with, even with all these resident volunteer efforts, we are losing ground. We are in favor of a lake district to stabilize funding to preserve the playground that Crescent Lake had been for Rhinelander and the Northwoods. That's the end of Harvey and Robin's statement. Thank you for letting me present it.
Thank you, Terry. I do have a written comment sheet here right in front of me, so we do have that logged in as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, up next is Sandra McKitrick. I'm hoping I'm saying that correctly, M-C-K-I-T-R-I-C-K. Address of 3155 Detienne Road, I will spell that, D-E-T-I-E-N-N-E, out of Rylander. And Sandra would like to testify in favor of the Crescent Lake District petition.
Hi, I'm Sandy McKitrick. Can you hear me?
We can hear you fine.
Okay. I am treasurer of the Crescent Lake Association at the present time. The amount of money we have been spending to control Eurasian mill foil in Crescent Lake has been increasing every year since it was first discovered. I have a graph here that, I don't know how well you can see it, but it, it shows that the, the amount since 2015, which is way at the bottom, and 2020, which is way up at the top. I'll give you the numbers from 2015 and 2020. In 2015, we spent $2,600 on Eurasian mill foil. And last year, 2020, it was $53,100. In 2018, it included $11,800 for purchase and fabrication of the dashboard. Expenses tallied up in these totals include lake surveys and mapping, water tests, Expenses tallied up in these totals include lake surveys and mapping, water tests, permits, boat inspections, GPS unit, special mailings, weed harvesting, diver supplies and labor, dash boat expenses, and Procellicor application in highly infested areas. My husband Larry and I are in favor of creating a Crescent Lake District for these reasons. One of our volunteers who spoke earlier, Cindy Hermel, writes DNR grant applications, but receiving these grants is not guaranteed. The expenses are now at this high level, level that I mentioned of $53,100 last year. Volunteers inspect boats and trailers which launch into and leave the lake. Volunteers built and operate, operate our dash boat and mark areas of infestation. Divers dig out patches of Eurasian milfoil, but we no longer have volunteers for this. Paid divers cost $20 per hour. Volunteers are spending a lot of their time and effort to prevent the lake from becoming clogged with invasive milfoil, which protects all property owners. It's fair that those who aren't volunteering should pay a share of the monetary costs. We have received donations from some lakefront landowners, but we cannot effectively plan for keeping Crescent Lake viable for boating, fishing, and other recreational uses without a stable, definable amount of funding. And I appreciate the ability to speak here. Thank you.
Up next, we have Richard Lower, L-O-W-E-R, address of 6978 Layer Drive, and Layer is L-A-I-R, Rylander. And Richard wants to testify in favor of the Crescent Lake District petition.
Michelle, one moment, please. I've had a request from the court reporter, Mr. Goldbach, submit his written, if he has something in writing he can send to you or email to you somehow.
Um, I do have that. That was when Terry spoke for Mr. Wolf, I believe. Is that?
No, not when he spoke for Mr. Wolf, but rather when he spoke for himself.
Oh, okay. Terry, do you, could you unmike there or unmute and just make reference? Do we have a hard copy of your testimony?
Yes, I emailed it to Jana on, oh, Friday, I believe it's Thursday or Friday, so you should have it.
Very good. We'll get that to the court reporter then. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Richard, I believe, is on Zoom. And Richard, you have the floor.
Thank you. I presume you can hear me?
Yep.
Okay, very good. In 1987, my late wife Shirley and I purchased property on Layer Drive that fronts on Crescent Shirley was our teacher in aquatic plant identification and classification. And I'm going to deviate now from my remarks and add the following. It, it deals with plant classification. It's, it's a very, very important part of what we do in Crescent, in Crescent Lake, is to understand the various types of classification. My background and training is in plant breeding genetics and plant pathology and my...
I'm sorry, sir, your background and training is in?
You have my comments?
Did you send your comments, your written comments in?
Yes, I did.
Okay, then Michelle has those and you can go ahead and keep reading. Thank you.
All right. My research interests are improvement of plant disease resistance and fruit quality, and we're part of an integrated pest management program for vegetables. While I spent 23 years as a faculty at the University of Wisconsin College of Agriculture and Life Sciences. The research findings from integrated pest management programs are very important because they lead to BMPs, or best management practices. That helps to bring home the technology that's needed to control and eliminate a target pest. And in this case, it's Eurasian water milfoil. And the additions to my comments deal with classification of plants. It's something that has passed us by, but it's very, very important for us in our new steps as we try and find ways to control Eurasian water milfoil. We need to understand that classification includes plants that are annuals, biennials, and perennials. They all act differently. We need to understand that plants in our lake are both monocots and dicots. This is extremely important, particularly if we get into adding chemicals to the water to control, as herbicides, to control plant growth. Another important factor is the kind of reproduction of the plants, whether it's asexual, as with cuttings, which we get many of with crops and motors and seedlings. Whether it's sexual or asexual. Sexual deals with timing and flowering, think of exchanges of pollen, if you would, between plants and within plants that lead to seeds. When flowering, plants do make seeds. The seeds are likely to be viable for decades. And we are now at a point in Crescent Lake, which for the very first time, we have had flowering of the northern milfoil population within our lake. So why did Eurasian water milfoil and northern milfoil both flower on Crescent Lake in 2020? We have absolutely no idea. But in the 10 previous years where we did track northern milfoil, it never flowered. Hybrid seed is likely when both types of flowers cross.
Sorry, you're at your three minutes. If you could please wrap up your thoughts.
The flowers that do set seeds have seeds which are probably going to live for 40 years or more, and they will generate new plants from time to time. So unfortunately, there are numerous other invasives in neighboring lakes throughout the state that will keep us busy, that are also found or will be found in Crescent Lake. Fortunately, with the support of the proposed Lake District, we will have the resources and technology necessary to protect Crescent Lake. Thank you.
Up next is our number 16 speaker, Michael Pazdernik, and I will spell the last name, Address of 3087 South Rifle Road, Rylander. And Michael, I have your registration slip at this time checked for information only. If you'd like to change that in favor or opposition, please state that.
Yes, after listening to the testimony so far, at this, first of all, my name's Mike Pazdernik, and I'm from 3087 South Rifle Road, town of Crescent. And my younger days, I was a town supervisor and alderman for the town, city of Pewaki, and I was a representative to the sanitary, Pewaki Lake sanitary district. And in order to fight raising new foils properly, you do, you do need a lot of funds. And with that, the formation of a lake district for the future is probably a good thing. I just want to reassure some folks that the formation of a lake district does give these folks a lot of authority. They do create their own taxing district, and that line item will show up on your tax bill. It's with just a word of caution that everybody that's for this monitors and attends the annual meeting, so things do not get passed that you're not aware of. In the long run, this can be a great opportunity to protect the lake, but with everybody's foresight and involvement, we can make it happen. Thank you.
Up next is Joan Jensen, J-E-N-S-E-N. Address of 3112 Pleasure Point, Rylander. And Joan would like to testify in opposition of the Crescent Lake District petition.
Yes, my name's Joan Jensen, 3112 Pleasure Point Road. My family's owned our property for 71 years since 1950. I'm very concerned about the invasive species, and I'm not necessarily supportive of a government body, though, when I think there might be other venues that could be explored. If we were given a detailed, you know, I spoke to several neighbors that said they would gladly donate more money to fight the invasive species if they were given a more detailed cost.
Oh, hang on just a second. There's some feedback for some reason?
The fight for the invasive species is extremely important, but one of my concerns is the way this process has been done. I feel that the landowners were not properly educated on the other far-reaching powers of the lake district. There was no mass mailing notifying landowners that this was going to occur, and they were not given proper, proper time and information about the lake district's full powers. Not everybody has computers, or they don't have the bills to do research on, and no handouts were given. So therefore, are landowners aware that their tax money will also go towards insurance because lake districts can be sued? Do they, that they can regulate boating? And when I was doing work research last week, I learned they can also control winter activities on the lake. They can add special assessments. They can buy and sell land. Were they informed that if they don't attend the annual meetings or special meetings, they have no vote and they have no voice? They have to be at the meeting. It doesn't matter if you're not in town or you have a family emergency. If you're not there, you have no voice. Some were told that the lake district can be dissolved. That's true. But were they told that it takes more votes to dissolve it than it was to form it, and that it's very difficult? Were circulators consistent with their information when they were going door to door? A circulator mentioned in a webinar that I, when I was watching it, that people were asking questions that she didn't know how to answer. Well, you don't go out and ask for circulate, for petitions to be signed if you can't give the proper knowledge. I spoke to one landowner who said that when she declines to sign the petition, the circulator said, well, I guess you just don't care. How many people were pressured to sign a petition when they didn't have full knowledge of what they were signing? I feel that more dialogue is needed before the formation of a lake district, so every landowner has full knowledge of a lake district, both those in favor of it and in opposition.
Okay, speaker number 18, Rob Jensen. And Rob is R-O-B-B-Jensen, J-E-N-S-E-N, 3112 Pleasure Point, Rylander. And Rob would like to speak in opposition of the Crescent Lake District petition.
I'd also like to thank the efforts of the Lake District Subcommittee formation for all their efforts. And also want to thank all the owners that have signed the petition and the thought that they put into that. However, I also served on Lake District for six years and observed in those six years some of the issues that are addressed. My concern is not with the need to control Eurasian milfoil, not at all. I agree we need to do that. My concern is if you look at the UW Extension Lakes District Guide, Chapter 4, quote, "Making sure that people can make an informed decision is vital to the lake community and to the whole process of petitioning. If people agree that what you are proposing is best for the lake and the lake community, they will more than likely support your efforts." The information shared here today, I think, needed to be ahead of time, not now. Lots of good reasons to control milfoil, but explain, I agree with that. However, early in the process, I had a conversation with a subcommittee member, and I expressed my concern that we were not given enough information. He took those issues back to the subcommittee, didn't get back to me, I had to call that person again. Said, well, I gave it to the subcommittee, and they're going to do a mailing, but we're still going door to door. Never got a mailing. The subcommittee goal, I indicated, so what's the goals of, of the district? To control Eurasian milfoil. That's where we're going to start. We've heard a lot of reasons here today to control milfoil. Was the electorate, the owners, informed of what the other goals are? My wife indicated the statutory powers. Nobody heard those things. We didn't hear it. I've heard that the land value is going to decrease. Because there are eight sales of land on Crescent Lake in 2020. The average increase was over 24% from assessed tax value and/or estimated for fair market taxes value on your taxes.
I'm sorry, sir, I just missed your last sentence there. You said the average increase was over 24% from assessed value, and then what did you say?
24%. Either if you looked at the assessed fair market value on your tax bill for 2020, or if you looked at the, the assessed value and the fair market value. Didn't hurt the property. It, it will, they could though. I understand that. But we were told it's going to happen. It didn't happen in 2020. When you, when you look at some of the other concerns here, the financial, to be an informed electorate, and you guys have heard me say this, you need to have knowledgeable decision-makers. I looked at the 1015 budget, income 47, 681,000 for control for AIS, expenses 45 plus. You want to have an increase of, they were saying 6% that'd bring 44,000 in, take away 10, 5 of donations, that's 33,000 additional money. All I want to know is where, justify that. You do a false, you do a false survey, identify the age range, come back and show us the financial need. I don't know if that was done. Again, I think the door to door, I wish they would have had information to give people so they could be an informed electorate. The bigger concern for us here of what the lake owners, is what is the state doing to fund these issues? Are they providing funds to control this process? The answer's no. County Board, we as citizens have to get our legislatures to change the process. Increase fees for licenses, increase whatever. We need more money, and I believe in that. I just believe that the process is flawed, the intention was great, but owners really didn't have enough information to be knowledgeable decision-makers, to say yes or no. And what are those other issues that this lake wants to do, the district thinks they're going to deal with? I'd like to know before I vote. I didn't mean it.
Three minutes, Rob.
Thank you. You're very generous, Brian. I had over four.
Rob, would you mind dropping off the written document there to Jana outside if that would be okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, up next, we have Brett Weir. I'm hoping I'm pronouncing that right. W-E-I-R. And the address is 4738 Sheep Ranch Road. And at this time, Brett, I have you checked as for information only. And if you could let me know if you want to keep that checkbox, or if you would change or would want to change in favor and opposition. Thank you.
Michelle?
Yes, Jana?
Brett was in Committee Room 2, and he just voiced his opinion that he's good to go. He's okay.
He's good to go in what way?
In the way that he is, he's got the information that he needs.
Okay, so he's just, we're good for testify, but for information only, so no actual speak?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, got it. Thank you, Jana. Okay. I've got speaker number 20 here, Bruce Hagan, H-A-G-A-N, 2718 Green Bass in Rylander. Bruce is on Zoom, and he wants to testify in favor of the Crescent Lake District petition. Now, he did write something in the... Now, he did write something in the chat box, so I am going to read this into record for Bruce. "It appears the lake has a rapidly growing biologic challenge with milfoil. The data suggests the problem is very unlikely to be ever eliminated in entirety, requiring constant monitoring and response. This requires oversight and financial support. The annual nature of such response will necessitate uninterrupted financing, a tax. Addressing the milfoil will work to ensure continued recreational use and maintenance of property values, both important issues. Hence, Mary and I support the tax funding." As I mentioned, we have him checked in favor of the Crescent Lake District petition. And I have speaker number twenty-one, which is Ryan Peterson. P E T E R S O N. Address of two nine nine eight Wassau Road in Rylander. And Ryan would like to testify in favor of the Crescent Lake District petition. And Ryan is testifying as an individual.
Thank you. I just want to conclude my statements from earlier, just to finish what I started with. I want to bring, I want to bring up again, once again, the UW Madison study that was done in two thousand eight that states that late, late wood, late wood, excuse me, lakefront properties lose an average of thirteen percent in value. And this is a very alarming statistic. To put that in the context, a house valued at two hundred fifty thousand dollars would lose thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars in property value. If milfoil continues to spread at its current rate, property owners will be left with the lake devoided of recreational opportunities and a property rapidly losing value. Rather than losing thousands of property value, the Lake District would only require a relatively small amountment in annual taxing contributions, excuse me, for each property to help fund the equipment, paying divers to harvest plants, lake surveys, permits, and other expenses relating to stop the spread of invasive species. Though familiar with the situation facing our lake, estimate that at least forty-two thousand dollars is needed to adequately stop the spread of these invasive species. Currently, the Lake Association does not generate anywhere near that figure in voluntary donations. In fact, since two thousand sixteen, the association has only generated thirty-five thousand dollars in voluntary donations. The efforts by the leaders of this association to gather these donations and procure grants have been nothing short of heroic, but more help is necessary at this time. Our lake can no longer rely entirely on donations from a select group of homeowners to ensure the wellness and health of a lake that everyone enjoys. Our Subcommittee fully understands the hesitancy of some property owners to permit another governmental body to operate on the lake. But the unique quality of a Lake District is that it's a governmental body operated by your neighbors, which means that the decisions and actions taken by the District Commission will be far more personable than almost any other political body. We also acknowledge that the lakes, excuse me, the state statute allows for a Lake District to undertake a wide variety of activities. However, our District and those who wish to lead it are narrowly focused on the abatement and eradication of milfoil before it ruins our lake forever. Voicing your support for a Lake District today means voicing your support for a brighter future for our lake. Thank you so much.
Okay. That is the last registration slip that I have, but I do want to check with both Bear Bell on Zoom and also with Jonna. If there are any registration slips that are in hand that I have not called on.
Hi, Michelle and everyone. I do not have any additional slips.
Thank you, Bear Bell.
Michelle, this is Jonna. I do not have any additional slips either.
Okay. Mister Chairman, looks like that is all the slips that we have unless by chance we miss someone. So I will let you call for last comment and do my best in getting names on slips if there's additional comment.
Hey, thank you, Michelle. I'm going to say this three times, as I guess that's what's required. Are there any others who have not spoken today and wish to? Are there any others who have not spoken and wish to?
Bob?
Yes?
I just had Wendy Goldbach text chat here and she wanted to speak in favor of the Lake District. Wendy, are you on, that you can, that you can hear me? And do you want me to read this or would you like to testify in person?
Yes, I'm here. I just want to speak in favor of it and I would like to say that there have been property owners who have purchased property here on the lake and did not know about the Eurasian water milfoil. And I believe that it's a disservice to the recreation of this lake that properties are being sold without the owners knowing that there is such a problem on this lake. And in opposition to the person who spoke earlier about, you know, property selling on the lake, I don't think that property owners who know that there is Eurasian water milfoil and know about it and the extent to which it can kind of hogtie the lake use would purchase property in that way. And so I am in favor of the Lake District for that very reason. That's all I have to say.
Okay, the last shot here. Are there any others who have not spoken and wish to? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. And I'll ask the committee or staff for any comments they have at this time. Okay, hearing no comments, I'm going to read the preliminary and timeline for what comes next and also keep in mind that this is preliminary and subject to change. A draft report of this hearing will go to UW Extension Conservation Committee on February eighth. That meeting will take place in this room, the county boardroom. A final report will go to the Conservation UW Extension Committee on March eighth. And it will probably still be in the county boardroom, that will be determined at the February eighth meeting. On March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, a report to the United County Board will be made. And a vote on the proposed Lake District will take place at the United County Board on April twentieth, twenty twenty-one, all happening in this county boardroom. Again, that's preliminary timeline and subject to change. Keep in mind what was stated earlier, I think by Brian, is that comments made at those meetings, you certainly can make comments about what's going on here, but the only that will go into record for this public hearing is what we've heard today. Both in-person comments on Zoom and anything that was written and delivered. Jonna, do you have something? Yes, go ahead.
The comments that you just read, the timeline, I have copies of those in the back of the coming boardroom here. If anyone would like to take a copy with them, they're welcome to just pick one up. I just sent them on the back table.
Thank you very much. Again, I want to thank everyone for your comments today. It certainly is an exercise in democracy that we've just, just had been a part of. I want to thank Michelle and Brian, Carl and Bear Bell. I want to thank Mike from Portal, the Land Information Office. Our UW Extension Conservation Committee members. Our standby, we had a guy standby, so we, if we had something happen, we could have him fill in. That was Supervisor Stephen Schreier, thank you, Stephen. Our IT department for being on standby as well. It seems like it's worked quite well today, which is great. The buildings and grounds for opening the courthouse today. Meredith Krane, our court reporter, and Karen Greyspire, Greyspire and Associates for helping our recorder today and asking all the questions to make sure that this is recorded properly. And the citizens for proposing the district and those that offered comments today. Thank you so much. We certainly appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from the committee.
Jim Winkler, a motion to adjourn? Mitch Ives, second.
All those in favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to adjourning? We are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Michelle, are you okay with everything now?
I think so. I think we got it all tagged. It's been recording from beginning to end. We have all our slips. I feel pretty good, darn good about it.
Wonderful. I think it went very smoothly. Thanks for your work.
Yep.
Meredith, are you okay with everything?
Yes, thank you very much. I know we're in contact with Michelle and Jonna and able to get, you know, anything that we need from them, so I think that we're all set. Unless Karen, unless Karen has anything.
No, we'll just get everything that, in writing, that was submitted, we'll get it.
That sounds good, Karen. Thank you so much and enjoy the rest of your weekend.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Goodbye.
Hey, Bear Bell. I'm gonna probably wait till everybody gets off and I'm gonna go shut this down in county boardroom and in committee room. We've got a little bit of shutdown to do. And then, thank you for all your help and bearing with us there.
Yeah, that makes sense. Do we want to connect on anything else now with Jonna?
We'll have to do it afterwards. We'll probably have to go shut this down because we've got it in three different rooms here. So I'm going to go shut this down officially and stop the recording since officially we're wrapped up. And how about if I just touch base with you afterwards, okay?
Sounds good. Talk to you soon.
All right, thanks for all your help, Bear Bell.
Michelle, this is Meredith.
Yeah, Meredith.
I can't recall from the hearing, Mister Jenrick, did he give his notes to anyone? I know he said he had notes, but he read at the beginning.
Yeah, you, you should have had all that information, Meredith. He had a packet of material with the, the Lake District boundaries, all the goodies that were sent out. Who was emailed, who was contacted?
I know, I know that we had, for instance, like the, oh, the public hearing and the notice of meeting and it did list all the boundaries, but there were other things that he was reading.
Let me, let me make sure with that. Let's see, is Jonna somewhere? Jonna, can you hear us? Are you in the boardroom?
The boardroom shut down, Michelle.
The boardroom shut down? Okay, all right, because I still see the boardroom from here.
Oh, I meant the committee room. I'm sorry.
Oh.
Jonna is in the boardroom. I see her.
Okay. There she is. We can hear you, but there's a lot of feedback too. Meredith was just wondering, the extra material that Carl spoke on today, that packet of comments and such, did that get sent out or can that get sent out to Meredith and her team?
I didn't hear any of that.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. We'll discuss after we shut it down.
That sounds good. I'm gonna lock down the county boardroom and turn off this button and get this room closed as Christian is coming back to close up the rooms and the, and buildings. Not until Carl calls in.
Okay, I'll talk to Meredith here and Karen. And why don't you just close that down and I'll make sure that I pass on what, what they need to you. Thank you.
So, Michelle, can you hear me okay? This is Karen. I took a, I made a list actually of everything I need. And I don't know if the most efficient way is to just read these off to you or if you want me to send an email. And I think if you.
I think the best way, Karen, is probably, if you could scan that to Jonna, would probably be the most efficient way. And then she's got it in hand. Most of probably what you need and want, we have, or if it's, she's already got that on her list to send to you.
Okay.
So.
And it's basically all the emails that if they were read and any documents that were read, anything that was read, we would like a copy of.
Yep, yep, she had intentions to. So, yeah, I think the best thing there, Karen, is just to, if you could scan and get that email over to Jonna.
Okay, and they're my handwritten notes, so they're kind of messy, but that's why I said in a nutshell, anything that anybody read. I also private messaged the people on Zoom as well as Bob Mott saying, please submit your comments.
Okay.
And I did with that, Bruce, let's see, no, you read his. Like Sandy McKittrick, I actually sent her a private message, asked her to get her statement.
Okay.
I don't know if you have that or.
I, I don't. The, the next best thing actually, Karen, is probably talking with Jonna Monday morning.
Okay.
On this, because I'm in a different, I'm in my office and Jonna's handling all the, all the board and committee rooms out there. And that might, if you want to send that and then maybe give a call Monday morning, then you guys could connect up with what needs to go your way.
Okay, okay, basically anything.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that's the problem. We'll, we'll get it over to you. If we've got it, you'll have it.
Okay, perfect. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else, Meredith, on your end that we could help with or how?
I don't think so. I think we can get everything to Jonna over the weekend or on Monday.
Okay, that sounds good. I'll talk with her once I hop off here. And just know that we'll be connecting back up via that list and Monday and then we'll get all worked out.
Right, and then, and then also, even though you gave all the names and you read them, if you could, did you put them on like one form or were they each?
No, they'll, they'll, they'll all be scanned over to you.
Okay, perfect.
They're all individual slips.
Excellent, excellent. Okay. Very good.
Good. Okay, um, I think I am the last one holding the fort on this meeting, so I think I'm going to hit stop record. And thank you all for the hard work that you guys did today. Really appreciate it.
And then one last thing, when you have it available, be sure you give us access to the link as well.
Yep, absolutely. I know that'll take a little bit to download, but you should, guys, should have that definitely on Monday. I can't see why any later.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you, Michelle.
Great, thank you, everyone. Take care and have a good rest of the weekend.
Thank you, you too.
All right, bye.